Kbev, are we ready? Good evening, everyone and people viewing online. We are at our December 10 regular meeting. We're in a new space and I really want to thank Rebecca Starkins. I want to thank Ken Haas and the whole staff who put together this amazing space for us. It looks amazing, so thank you. Welcome, everyone.
And to get us started tonight, I would like to call upon No Margo for the flag salute.
Mission and vision.
Our mission is educational excellence. The vision is our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
And our community pledge.
The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment.
Therefore, we pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do our part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school, community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you, Mr. Margo. Before I get an approval of the agenda, I'd like to take a moment of silence for a remarkable teacher, Ms. Denise Wiki, who fell ill and recently died. And we'd like to take a moment of silence, followed by some words from one of the parents that has a child in her class. Thank you. And Ms. Manishari, if you'd like to give us a few remarks.
Thank you so much. We unfortunately lost one of our amazing teachers a couple weeks ago. Her name is Denise Wiki. I had the honor of being a parent of one of the students in her kindergarten class. And as my six-year-old said, I am sad and I am angry. And I think a lot of us are feeling the same way. Ms. Wiki was spectacular. And what I appreciated most about her is how honest she was and transparent about her own experience growing up and what that meant for her and the kind of teacher that she wanted to be. And I wanted to thank the El Rodeo team for preparing and holding such a beautiful ceremony for her on Sunday morning. Our heart goes out to Mrs. Wiki's family and of course, the El Rodeo family. And I would say that the one thing that to me was the silver lining of this terrible circumstance is that it really brought home to me that a lot of our teachers are like family, they're brothers and sisters to one another. And to see, you know, teachers weeping for the loss of their colleague and their friend was very sad, but at the same time, the heartfelt connection between them was beautiful. And so, thank you for this moment of silence. And, you know, may her memory continue to be a blessing for all of us because she was truly a very special lady.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report of closed session action.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. There was no action in closed session today.
Okay, thank you. We do have a number of folks who've come for public comment. Thank you for joining us. We're going to start with the Zoom person, who is Michael Higginbottom, who has sometime seated to him. Is Zoom ready? Hello. Kbev, it will be six minutes. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Higginbottom. And if you would like to begin. Kbev, change it to six minutes, please. We cannot hear.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Very good. My name is Mike Higginbottom. I'm a 1971 graduate of Forest Man and a 1975 graduate of Beverly Hills High School. I think everyone on this Zoom call knows that BHHS is the most famous high school on the planet. When I attended, it was also a national leader in academics, arts, and facilities. We even had a recently created and groundbreaking racial integration program, one of the most successful in the history of the country. Created and championed by a multiracial coalition led by three individuals, faculty member Lao Suter, Principal Willard Robinson, and School Superintendent Eleanor Nathan. All of these aspects combined to make Beverly Hills High School a very, very special place. This amazing history of excellence is why news reports of the recent racist incidents are so shocking and quite frankly, personally disappointing to me. Three quick points I'd like to make. First, as to freedom of speech. Speech that threatens is not protected under the First Amendment. Under the First Amendment, you can't yell "fire" falsely in a crowded theater. Why not? Because people could get hurt. Certainly, some of the reported incidents have crossed that line, leading to a number of Black students feeling unsafe. Second point, as to student safety. When students are worried about being harmed physically, a quality learning environment is jeopardized. And I think every educator knows that. Certainly, students using racial epithets, threatening physical harm to other students based on who their parents voted for, and verbally abusing and disrespecting teachers, certainly, that's harmful. That's detrimental to high academic achievement overall and to a quality learning environment. Make no mistake, nobody should get it twisted, vile language and violent rhetoric has no place at a reputable educational institution. Pure and simple. And the third point I'd like to make, as to excellence. BHHS has a history of outstanding achievement in academics, in theater arts, in educational reform, as well as in many other categories. I can remember, we were one of the first high schools to allow students to choose their own courses. The recent incidents reported, though, seem to reflect, at best, juvenile misbehavior rather than clear and excellent educational leadership. And so, let me summarize by saying, the reference actions of students are inconsistent with freedom of speech, they're harmful to the quality learning environment that is expected at BHHS, and most significantly, it's disrespectful to the legacy of excellence in racial and religious interaction that occurred at Beverly back in the 1970s. As a law school dean, I dealt with a few similar issues. And candidly, this one is not a difficult one to resolve. Stand against violence, stand against racism, and stand against misbehavior. So, for these reasons, I'd ask that Dr. Breggy and the board do the right thing here, to impose appropriate punishments on the students that have done wrong and to ensure student safety in a respected environment by coming up with new rules and regulations to make sure that all students feel safe in this learning environment. Thank you for the time to present.
Thank you so much. Next, we have in person, Victoria Tate. And Ms. Tate, you have six minutes as Ty Tate has seated time to you. Yes, it's a new format, but if you wouldn't mind sitting there, thank you. Okay, please, Kbev, calibrate it to six minutes. Yes, you may begin. Is your mic on, press?
Is it on now? Can you guys hear?
Yes.
I initially was only going to come to make a public comment towards the children who were brave enough to come forward and tell us about the experiences they faced when Beverly High School permitted a MAGA rally on campus. I wanted these young, Black, educated students to know that you are seen, you're hurt was heard, and you are supported. I wanted to thank the students for having the courage to speak their truth, even when their administrators and superintendent lack that same courage. When you finally did respond to my inquiry, Michael Breggy, you took it upon yourself to try to lecture me about my tone. You said my tone unsettled you and made it difficult for you to respond. Now, please imagine how unsettling and how difficult it must have felt for the Black students who were called the N-word and Latino students who were told to go back where they came from. To ensure I get my tone correct this time, I now stand before you and this board as a Black woman, as a proud Afro-Latina mother, and I ask, and what tone would you find it appropriate or appeasing for me to have to ask you to provide a safe and inclusive learning environment where my child is not called a nigger? Would you prefer my tone be hopeful, like Barack Obama's? He spoke in a tone of hope, and returned he was denigrated and his citizenship questioned. Would you prefer my tone be unifying, like Fred Hampton's? He brought peaceful relations to troubled neighborhoods, and returned he was called a radical threat, and they riddled his home with 90 bullets, killing him in his sleep while he lay unarmed in his own home. Would you prefer my tone be forgiving, like Nelson Mandela, who they jailed for 27 years? How about my tone be prayerful, like that of Addie Collins, Carol McNair, Carol Robertson, and Cynthia Wesley? These were four girls who prayed, and in return, their Baptist church was bombed, killing them and injuring 20 others in an Alabama Baptist church. How about a passionate tone like Malcolm X, who was shot 21 times in front of his wife and his children? Or maybe my tone should be silent. Silent like Kylan Kaepernick, whom return had his career taken away, and they still publicly criticized him for being silent. There's a continued pattern here. Those who have suffered an injustice are held to a higher standard than those who have committed the unjust act. Rather than take accountability for the racist environment that exists and are due to your refusal to acknowledge its existence, you took time to question my tone. Rather than instantly and unequivocally condemning racist behavior, the use of the N-word, and hate speech towards Black students, you announced at first you had to conduct an investigation. This publicly implied there was no truth to the experiences and claims made by the Black students in your district. In your attempt to discredit and silence the Black students who were victimized, you made it so other students who were hurt are now afraid to speak up about their experiences. It wasn't just Black students targeted, it was Latino students, it was students with family members within the LGBT community as well. Board Member Amanda Stern, you said your son was called a homophobic slur while in the PTA council meeting. You acknowledged the hurtful act done to your child, but when it came to the Black children, you told the LA Times, "We cannot act on allegations that prove to be false. We have no record or report of a racial slur being used." But multiple Black children stood before this very board and informed you to your face of the slurs they recalled. Councilwoman Mary Wells even made time for the LA Times boasting about the school's strong stand against racism and antisemitism. Yes, the school makes a strong stance, but only for some. During Mary Wells' tenure, you, the board, made loud and proud statements and supported the Ukraine, women in Iran, and condemned hate speech against Asians and condemned antisemitism. But while you did all this, the Black students were still being called niggers and treated poorly. The teachers, administrators, board members were all notified of the Black students in your district and no one ever, long before Mary Wells ever stepped foot in City Hall. The racism did not decline because your public position was elevated. As I conclude my statement, to the brave Black children who spoke up, continue to speak your truth. To the superintendents or board members who feel discomfort in my tone, please remember that when shining the light of truth upon an injustice, it is not the job nor the responsibility of the oppressed to comfort the oppressor.
Thank you. Nita Bachta? Nita? Nita, you have six minutes. Nita, you have six minutes.
Can you hear me? Is this on?
Yes.
"We are concerned parents of Beverly Hills Unified School District. Many of us have reached out to you individually, and now we are writing as a unified collective of over one hundred parents. It is our understanding that a student-led political rally around Election Day was pre-approved by the district administrators and allowed to escalate into a racially charged incident. At the November twelfth Board of Education meeting, several Beverly Hills High School students testified that they experienced students shouting words of profanity and hate. They felt terrified to go to school. They feared for their lives and their health. They were subjected to being called the N-word. They dealt with a lot of racism that week and witnessed hateful rhetoric. The video footage from the school's security camera lacks audio and has been edited and circulated online to favor the offending students and diminish the accounts of the victims. Neither administration nor campus security did enough to control the event. In fact, we're told at least one security guard participated in the political rally, possibly two. Several parents have asserted that the principal was walking with the demonstrators, which contributed to the mistaken perception that the principal was part of the demonstration. Later, it was communicated that the principal was only there to monitor the demonstrators." One of our top-line priorities is to get clear information about what happened before, during, and after these events. While students' testimonies from Beverly Vista Middle School are not as intense as the high school, there were multiple charged incidences at BVMS post-election. Children were asked who their parents voted for, and if they said Harris or even declined to answer, they were intimidated, mistreated, or hit. Reports of bullying were dismissed, ignored in violation of California's Education Code, Section 234.1B1, also known as SETS law. Students at BVMS regularly report the racial slurs that are used on campus, similar to the BHHS students' testimonies heard at the board meeting. A number of parents and students have expressed their concerns to administrators during the past two weeks. However, these concerns were met with an air of dismissal. No one from the district has publicly acknowledged these students' testimonies, nor has there been any accountability for the harmful actions. Our goal is not to demonize any of the students, it's to offer support to all the children involved and improve interactions across our district. The incidents referenced above are not isolated incidences. They reflect a larger cultural problem in our schools. Bigotry in many forms of its presence in our school district has largely gone unchecked. The demonstration was the match lit to a powder keg of intolerance that already exists in our schools. If nothing is done, it's only a matter of time before it explodes again. At the most recent board meeting, a student implored the district, "What's going to be done to make our students feel safe again?" It's time for school leaders to take meaningful action. On Friday, November fifteenth, almost ten days after the main incident occurred and long after it had been written about in major newspapers, Superintendent Breggy sent an email to the community that not only did not offer any level of transparency, but was also filled with innuendo and was wholly insufficient. We're entitled to better communication than this. There's still a lot of confusion about what actually happened and mixed messages from administrators that had led to additional friction within the community, igniting hostility between parents. Incidents that are intimidating, upsetting, and filled with hate speech have been ongoing since November fifth, and the situation continues to escalate both online and in person. Students are afraid to go to school and are anxious while sitting in class. So far, district administration has not been willing to levy consequences nor even acknowledged the larger problem. Principal Drew Stewart met with an affected student who came to him stating that they felt unsafe, and he told them he's in an awkward position because this qualifies as free speech. Calling students the N-word, the F-slur, and shouting "deport all Mexicans" is considered hate speech and is not protected under California Education Code 2341A, a Safe Place to Learn Act. Similarly, BHUSD's Policy 51453A clearly states that students have a right to be free from all hate crimes and abusive statements or any activity which degrades. As concerned parents, we have three goals: to be given more complete information regarding the recent racial divisive events in our school; two, to understand what actions the school has taken and why; and three, to understand the administration on future solutions to make our school safe for all students. We need to know when and how the board and schools plan to take action in order to put an end to the ongoing bigotry so students can feel safe. Many of us are concerned about the return school date of January sixth and what measures will be put into place to protect all students during that time. We're committed to partnering with our schools and administrators to improve conditions for all students. This is of utmost importance.
Thank you. Candace Zola Mashariki. And you have six minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you have six minutes.
Thank you to the board, Dr. Breggy, all of the principals, and the students who so bravely spoke up last meeting, and the parents of all races who fight for justice for all of our kids. My name is Zola Mashariki. I am a parent in this district, and I'm here to implore the district to take immediate, transparent, and meaningful action to address the overt and covert displays of racism as well as the willful ignorance. The overt racism is a problem. The rampant use of the N-word in our schools is a problem. And also, diverting attention from racism is equally problematic. It may be worthwhile, since many people are coming to talk to you about what should be done and what this is about, for me to talk about what this is not about. It wastes energy and valuable school resources for us to spend time on non-issues. So this is not about Persian-Jewish people versus Black people. We honor our Jewish brothers and sisters. Their pain is our pain. Black people have historically, and we presently stand with the Jewish community in their fight against persecution and bigotry. This is also not about a Trump thing. He is our incoming president, and regardless of who voted for whom, he is the next president for all America. Very few students in any of the district's schools could actually vote in this past election. This is also not about caving to parental bullying. It is clear this is a district where the loudest voices get served. This cannot continue. The California Educational Code has to be respected and served. It has to be a safe place to learn for all students. This is also not about false allegations. Or as Amanda Stern was quoted in the LA Times today referencing racial slurs being used in high school, quote-unquote, "We cannot act on accusations that prove to be false." What false allegations? If someone is lying about experiencing bigotry, we deserve more than innuendo and gaslighting. Seven students reported the following in open forum. They testified that they experienced, quote, "students shouting words of profanity and hate." They felt, quote, "terrified to go to school." They, quote, "feared for their lives and their health." They were subjected to, quote, "being called the N-word." They, quote, "dealt with a lot of racism that week" and witnessed, quote, "hateful rhetoric." By all rules of evidence, first-person accounts are the strongest. Seven people accounting is serious corroboration. Ignoring these accounts is willful ignorance. Surely, the testimonies of seven students is enough to create a sense of urgency. Seven allegations are false? It is not about what is not on a recording. Superintendent Michael Breggy said in a statement, "No such epitaph was confirmed in the video nor was it reported by students to administration." What sort of investigation relies on video footage to substantiate a claim and disregard personal statements? No one would ever be convicted for rape if to be believed one required a videotape to substantiate the claim. Surely, we have evolved beyond this. And there is video footage. Someone saying "deport all Mexicans" that day. Not all Mexicans are here illegally. How is that not a racial slur? There is video, and I can share it here also, of the bathroom in the high school where it says, "I hate the N-word." If you have not seen it, I will share it before I move from here. Yet our administrators want to imply the allegations of racial hatred in Beverly Hills High School are false. Stop it. It's disrespectful to these courageous students and discourages others from coming forward. Finally, this is not about what happened on Election Day and the day after. Those days, those marches, were symptoms of a greater problem. Forget about what day, what time, who uttered the epitaph, who was on the receiving end. This is not about one day, one moment in time, one incident. So what is it about? It's about a pervasive problem and a need for change. Are people using the N-word in BHUSD? The answer is unequivocally yes. The lack of accountability, the lack of severe consequences, the lack of preemptive education, these are all creating an environment for racism to grow and fester. So I ask you, when will you educate our students? When will you hold them accountable? All of these students are our kids, and they are crying out for guidance and restorative justice. When will you educate yourselves? And when will you be held accountable? Immediately, immediately, immediately. Thank you. And as mentioned, I'll share the picture from the bathroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jill Humphries. And you have six minutes.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Elum Humphries, proud Black alumni of Beverly Hills High School, class of nineteen eighty-three. Forty-three years ago, my parents, Vernon and Machetta Humphries, southern transplants fleeing the harsh realities of Jim Crow, segregation, enrolled their three children in the Los Angeles voluntary busing program. They believed in the transformative power of civil rights reforms to open doors for our generation. My siblings and I are all proud graduates of Beverly Hills High School. Today, I stand before you not just as an alumna, but as a college professor, Fulbright scholar, and international affairs professional, but most importantly, an educator and a concerned community member deeply committed to the district's promise of educational excellence and equity for all students. As a participant in the multicultural transfer student program, I was one of many students whose presence in Beverly Hills Unified was part of a broader effort to promote diversity and equity in education. This program was not just a testament to the district's commitment to inclusion, but also an acknowledgement of the benefits of creating a multicultural learning environment. My participation in this program shaped my understanding of the power of education to bridge cultural divides and foster mutual respect. Ten years ago, I stood before this very board to advocate on behalf of Carter Paceenger, the first Black principal of Beverly Hills High School. Less than a decade ago, Beverly Hills Unified School District paid nearly seven hundred thousand to settle a lawsuit with Mr. Paceenger, who alleged discrimination while serving in his historic role. In 2017, just two years after settling with Mr. Paceenger, the district hired Dr. Collins Williams as Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Now, Dr. Collins Williams, who is a Black female professional, has sued this year alleging that the district allowed a culture of racism to permeate and ferment throughout Beverly Hills Unified School District, cites traumatizing students, parents, and staff who are Black Americans and other persons of color. I'm here again in 2024 addressing this culture of racism, bigotry, and prejudice, this time targeting our children and youth. Black, Latino, and LGBTQ students have been harassed, called slurs, and intimidated on your campuses. This is no longer just an issue impacting staff or administrators. It's endangering the safety and well-being of the most valuable members of our community, our students. At what point does the Beverly Hills Unified School District acknowledge that you have a very serious problem? Beverly Hills Unified School District is part of a broader multicultural, ethnic, racial, and religious polity. As adults, we have a profound responsibility to nurture all students into mature, compassionate, and responsible individuals grounded in the principle of e pluribus unum, out of many, one. This prevalent culture of racism, bigotry, and harassment at Beverly Hills High School and Beverly Vista Middle School represent a significant failure to uphold these ideals. I bring to your attention a similar contentious political time period that occurred during my tenure at Beverly Hills High School. As a sophomore in 1980, the Iranian Revolution had just occurred, and Ronald Reagan was president. U.S. Embassy staff and citizens were being held hostage in Tehran. Here at Beverly, I first encountered Persian-Iranian students, refugees, asylum seekers, and immigrants whose families had fled Iran. They too were minority students, much like Black American students at Beverly Hills High School. It would have been easy, given the tense political climate, to target these Persian students with derogatory names such as shajus or graggars. Yet I do not recall any such animosity or anti-Iranian hate being directed toward them by the student population, and certainly not any Black American Persian bullying. Instead, I remember establishing friendships with a few Persian students, particularly those I shared academic interests with or ran track with and even had adolescent crushes. Those relationships formed through shared experiences and mutual respect remain intact to this day. These connections also highlighted the beauty of cultural exchange and camaraderie transcending cultural boundaries. Black and Persian youth demonstrated that shared experiences and mutual respect could build lasting connections, even amid challenging times. Given these experiences, I find it odd and deeply troubling that a community whose origins are historically rooted in diaspora, refugee, and migrant status would engage in anti-Black racism and immigrant and sexual minority prejudice today. The variability of many immigrant groups that migrate to the United States is directly tied to the gains of the civil rights movement forged off the backs of Black Americans. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Immigration and Nationality Act of 1965 revolutionized immigration policy, dismantling restrictive quotas and allowing more immigrants from non-European countries into the U.S. It is ironic and disheartening that those who have benefited from these sacrifices would perpetuate the very forms of discrimination that Black Americans fought so hard to dismantle. I echo the parents' demands for accountability but urge the district to implement a restorative justice approach. Restorative justice focuses on repairing harm caused by misconduct through inclusive dialogue and mutual understanding rather than punitive measures alone. It holds those responsible cannibal by requiring them to acknowledge their actions, understand their impact on others, and actively participate in making amends. This approach fosters healing and reconciliation while still aligning with district policies and state and federal law to ensure a safe and respectful learning environment. Beverly Hills Unified School District is part of a diverse and interconnected world. It is our responsibility to prepare students to navigate that world with integrity, compassion, and respect. My parents placed their trust in this district to deliver on those values, and I urge us all to honor that trust by addressing these challenges with transparency, urgency, and care. Let us foster an environment where students can grow into the mature, responsible individuals we aspire for them to become. A place where e pluribus unum is not just an ideal, but a lived reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Gage.
Hello?
Hello?
I have six minutes as well?
Yes, six minutes.
I don't have a prepared speech, and I'm not a parent of a student here. Instead, I'm an attorney, and I happen to be the child of an alumni years ago. I am representing teachers that are African-American who have been called racial terms, have been threatened and bullied by this university, by this college, and by this high school. I also have been contacted by multiple parents who have Black children at the schools here who have been subjected to racial comments, some of them physical violence. And they too want to see justice and pursue lawsuits against the Beverly Hills Unified School District. I read in today's LA Times where the school claims there's no proof of any racial comments. But I have videos showing the N-word on the boys' room bathroom. I also have videos of two students who showed how the cafeteria was so nice and clean in the morning and so dirty and disgusting in the afternoon as they're zooming in on Black students eating food. And yet, this board has the audacity to tell the Times, "There's no evidence of racism." Today, we had a press conference near Beverly Hills High School. Several of the students tried to interfere with that. And I thought to myself, when you're on camera in front of a number of people and you want to start trying to intimidate Black individuals that are bringing suits against the high school, what's going to happen when you're not on camera and you're there with young children that you can try to bully? Those of you that don't think that there's racism going on have blinders. I happen to be accused twelve times today on Instagram of being anti-Semitic, simply because I'm representing because I'm representing Black people. I happen to be Jewish. So I'm not anti-Semitic, and I did not have any comments, one way or another, about religion because this isn't, to me, anything that's religious. This is race. If a person is called N-word, if Kamala Harris is referred to with profanity in the school by students, that's a problem, and that's racial. I hear that Latinos also happen to be called racial comments and gay people. I have a daughter who is gay and trans. I have a wife who's Latin and Black. So I see that folks get maligned from a number of different ways. And this is not just a problem with Beverly Hills High School. It's the city of Beverly Hills. It's the police department. I've hit them for over eight million dollars for anti-different things, including being anti-Semitic, anti-Black, anti-Latin, anti-gay. And right now, there's over 1,085 Black people in litigation in a class action for being pulled over driving while Black. So you need to focus on the problems that are here in the school, and denying them is expensive to the school because that's often the only way to make change, but it's also harmful to the students. So I'm representing individuals against the university, against the Unified School District because they have been treated badly, they've been threatened, you have students scared to go to school, students not coming to school, you have teachers afraid to come to school. And I'm hopeful that you will make some changes. I know the NAACP met with the superintendent today because I talked with them as well, and people are watching you. Thank you.
Thank you. Marquise Ellis. I believe you have three minutes.
To Neil revert her time to me should be, so it should be six.
I apologize, six minutes.
Okay, so I'm a father of five Black kids in the district. Can you hear me? So I'm a father of five Black kids in the district. So it looks like, Dr. Braggy, the district, it appears as if you guys are subject to multiple delusions in which I need to address, if I may. Delusion number one is you appear to think that we are asking or begging you to fix this racial problem, this anti-Semitic problem, which I'm using anti-Semitic because it applies on both sides. It appears that you think we're asking you to fix this racial harassment, bigotry, discrimination, mental, verbal, emotional abuse that our kids are going through every day. But you couldn't be more wrong. On the contrary, we are demanding that you fix this problem. We're demanding you do your job, just like any reasonable parent would demand. I don't know what would make one person believe that one child's peace is more important than the other. You gotta bear with me. So one child's peace being more important than the other, that's delusion number two. You couldn't be more wrong. Delusion number three is I'm not sure if you guys know what year it is because you're acting as if this is pre-civil rights movement and the racial crimes that are being committed against our children are not punishable by law. You're acting as if you don't even know your own school code as it relates to bullying and racism. It just makes no sense, and you couldn't be more wrong. Delusion number four is thinking it's an option. It appears, Dr. Braggy, that you feel as you, you appear to feel as if you have discretion on how to help, how much to help, when to help, based off a child's demographic numbers in the school, based off whether their parents are giving monetary support, based off their religious background, it appears ethnic background, and also whether or not you like their tone in the email. But you don't have a choice to do your job. None of you have a choice to do your job. Either you're gonna do your job or somebody else gonna do it for you. Simple and plain. We're not asking, we're not begging. Delusion number five, which could be the most detrimental delusion of all, is that we are not playing. These are our children we talking about. If you think we're just gonna keep on coming up here to these board meetings, spilling out our hearts, looking at confused stares, sometimes unempathetic stares, we're not gonna do it. When the job's not getting done, we just gonna wrap it up. If we face backlash, we just gonna wrap it up. And we're gonna keep on wrapping it up until the job gets done. There is no option, there is no wiggle room. This needs to be fixed, and this needs to be fixed now. That's it.
Thank you. Kim Turner. I believe you have three minutes.
My name is Kim Turner. Hello. My name is Kim Turner. I'm an alumni of 1986. I went to Beverly Hills system through Arrowdale all the way to Beverly Hills High School. My mother worked very hard to bring me to this, to the community and the Beverly Hills System for Education. My memory going to Beverly Hills was we had camaraderie amongst our students. Our students collaborated together. We interact with different cultures and customs and traditions. We didn't have this kind of strife, and this strife is something that I'm just not, I'm not familiar with. When I went to Beverly Hills High, and I remember the Persian community coming, like one of the parents said, we worked together, we did sports together, we conversated together, but we didn't have this division. And so with this kind of division, it seems like this is more of an internal or external influence, inside or outside, I'm not quite certain. But my memories as a alumni going here is that we worked together as a collaboration of students. We didn't have the hatred, name callings, we didn't have that. So I don't remember experiencing that. My concern is that what is the administration and faculty going to do about that? And when you have students that are misguided, and it seems like students are misguided, how are you gonna direct them in the right direction? Is my question. And I say that there's a need of education on what the model of Beverly Hills High School was about. And it was about collaboration, working together, respecting each other, having integrity for each other, not harming or causing turbulence. So my question is, what are you gonna do? How are you gonna educate the parents and the students for their actions? And so that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Gastelum? Oh, she's seated, okay, all right. Kyle Neiman? Okay, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your last name. You have three minutes.
Thank you guys for having me. I appreciate it. First thing I want to say is Mark Mead, during the school, the Trump rally, I was just rallying like everyone else was, and he came up and just grabbed me in the neck and was completely unprovoked. I was just standing there with everyone else. He walked through the crowd and came and he grabbed me in the neck and for no reason. And I don't feel comfortable that he's at the school, that he didn't have any repercussions or anything, you know? We're all held to a high standard. I think everybody should have consequences for their actions. When I went to the school, I mean, I've done things I'm not proud of at the school, and I've had consequences for it, as rightfully so, and I think there should be consequences. And I don't think that it's okay that he's still at this school. And I also want to say, our rallying during the schools was peaceful from what I saw. None of me and my friends were doing anything racist or saying anything racist. If other people were, I didn't see it. I don't think people were doing that, not denying what anyone's saying, but I just, Persians, people, we're not that type of community. We don't, you know, we're good people, we respect everyone, we respect everyone's beliefs, we accept everybody, you know? We're also like a minority, we're Persian, you know, so just in terms of that, I think we were, you know, it's kind of being a bad picture is being painted of us, and I think it's unfair because we're a good community. Thank you. Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We have Kathy Hakokian. Hello, you have three minutes.
Sorry, I didn't prepare to write anything. My son is Kyle Neiman. Okay, sorry. I'm Kathy Hakokian. I'm Kyle Neiman's mother. He just spoke up here. I love Beverly Hills Unified School District, and I've always been grateful for staff that's always supported my son, myself, and Kyle's father. We have always supported the school in whatever they needed as far as Kyle and his IEP is concerned. He has been held to very high standards, and we were okay with that because at the end of the day, we want to raise a good human being. He's been held accountable for things, like he said, maybe rightfully so, maybe sometimes not so rightfully so. Either way, I think it's unacceptable. The man in this room, Mark Mead, he singled out my son in the day of the rally, and I have multiple videos of him literally charging through a crowd, opening two hands, putting it around my son's neck, shaking him to the point where the cap on his head fall off. I went in, I did make this report to Mr. Stewart, the principal. All that I was told was that we're gonna open an investigation, and it's also my understanding that at the last meeting here, there was multiple students who also said the same thing about the same person. I find it unacceptable. He assaulted my son. My son is a young man. He didn't say anything to him. He did nothing to deserve it. Again, he singled my son out. He charged through a crowded room, and he's also been very unkind to my son in the past too, even telling other students that they shouldn't hang around with my son. I don't feel like people like Mark Mead deserve to be working around children at any age, at any capacity. To this day, no one has gotten back to me about the investigation on him, but I do see that he is in this room. I asked the staff to make sure that he would never be in the same room with my son until the investigation is over, and unfortunately, I do see him in this room right now. That's it. I think it's, he assaulted my son. You should never put your hands on a child. If my son did that, I'm very sure that he would be arrested on campus. So I don't see why the staff members should get a card, launch card, when it comes to assault, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing with public comment, Danzali Abernathy.
Hello. My name is Donzali Abernathy. My father was a man named Ralph David Abernathy. My godfather was a man named Martin Luther King Jr., and together they created the civil rights movement. Mark Mead was principal of Beverly Hills High School when there was a racial incident with the Beverly Hills cheerleaders that called the Santa Monica High School cheerleaders the N-word. Mark Mead was so outstanding, he asked me, would I please come and give five assemblies there at the high school? I literally spent the entire day, did I not, with the students. And the great thing about it was, after each assembly, I was surrounded by so many of the students who then came up to me and apologized for their racism and for the things that they did. They literally spoke about it. I think it's very important that we address what's happening at the Beverly Hills High School because it is not something that doesn't exist. I am a Black woman married to an Iranian man who was born in Iran and raised in Shiraz. The beautiful thing is that my husband educates me about the Iranian community. I know it because I have lived in your community for more than 25 years. Racism is real. You all are immigrants. We welcome you all into our country. It is not okay when you act out racially against us. You all are also perceived as not Caucasian people, the same as that man right there or that woman seated beside you because your skin is olive. I know this from my brother-in-laws who don't want to go into the sun because their skin becomes too brown. It's time for healing in Beverly Hills. The children and their hatred has to stop. It begins at home. When we integrated the elementary school in 1965, the little children called me the N-word not some days, but every single day. But thankfully, there were teachers and there were parents who came together and taught the children how to love because children naturally love each other. It is the hatred that they learn from their parents at home that is perpetuated in an educational environment. Thankfully, not last year, but a few years after I spoke for Mark Mead, for all of those children, the children, the student body, asked me to come and do the podcast there at the Beverly Hills High School. I couldn't come this past year because they wanted my Iranian husband to be there to speak as well. I wish that he could be here tonight, but he's not. But this is unacceptable, and I'm going across America trying to heal relations between Black people and Jewish people. Moses, who was the king of the Jews, was married to one woman in the Bible and in the Torah. She's an Ethiopian woman. She's Black like me. So there's no room for racism to exist more than 3,000-plus years later, and especially not in Beverly Hills. That's all I have to say. You guys have got to do better.
Thank you. I believe that's it for public comment. Thank you all. We're gonna move on to the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item C1.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the certificated personnel report. I want to pull lines four through six.
I will make a motion to second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, for sake of conversation, I'll make a motion to approve items four through six on the certificated personnel report.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I pulled this because later on this evening, we're going to be discussing our audit findings. Finding number 2023-003 specifically states that the district has 248.21 full-time equivalents for teachers based on an allowable ratio for unified school districts of .08. The district must have less than 19.86 full-time employees related to non-exempt certificated administrative employees. The district had 22 full-time employees for non-exempt certificated administration, employees representing an excess of 2.14 full-time employees. The district, therefore, is not in compliance with state requirements. So then I have to ask you, Dr. Braggy or Dr. Hasty, in approving an administrator tonight, how does that affect our findings on the report?
Yeah, from a budget perspective, Dr. Hasty will, and then I can chime in about the administration position.
Yeah, we're talking about the cost of education, right? The percentage, which it needs to be 55%, and then we also have a dollar amount that has to be for instruction, so.
It's not the cost of education. That's not it. It's the specific finding is that we are above the allowed ratio with administration to faculty.
Yeah, so in that, it's something that we, I think we have the same. Yeah, so in, in that, it, it's something that we, I think we had the same issue last year. And it was something that came up last year and it's definitely something we're addressing. And we just got to get that amount down. There's ways we can do that and there's strategies to get around it. But at this time, it's a monetary finding of about 35,000, I believe, and we have to pay the difference.
Yeah, I thought that we were down though. I thought that we had, we had made reductions last year.
Yeah.
That, that changed the overall number.
Yeah.
So I want to know about the penalty of the 35,000. Is, is that actually assessed? And if we are to hire another administrator tonight, will we be assessed that penalty again? And how does that affect the budget?
Again, it's, it's the audit, so that's a, yes, I mean, it could be a potential thing we can do, but I would not hold us back from hiring the administrator now because we are strategizing around this and we're going in the right direction to reduce that cost.
We also had a lot of one-time funds during COVID, so we had the SRLM funds. And so because of that, it was really difficult for districts across our state to meet that requirement. Now that we have expired those funds, I think we're closer to reaching that 55% requirement.
Well, that's not, that's not the one I'm talking about, not the 55%. It's the ra, it's the ratio of, of admin to faculty. I want to be specific because, only because we actually have something to, to add to that ratio on the agenda tonight.
That was last year, so we didn't.
So, because I'm, because I'm pretty.
That was, the, on the report, it was last year?
No, no, I understand, but we haven't decreased in administration.
We have, we have.
Right, okay. We have, but we're adding tonight.
Right, but it was a different position that we had reduced last year.
I, I just want to make sure that we will not be assessed another fine by hiring this position. Or if we are assessed another fine, there's a waiver or a way to excuse the fine. I, I don't want to hire somebody and then the district gets fined $35,000 for hiring somebody. That's bad practice.
We will not be assessed another fine for this.
We will not be assessed another, on the record, Dr. Hasty.
On the record, I'm saying it now.
Right.
Okay. All right. I appreciate the explanation. Thank, because it's, you know, to vote for this in the consent and then a few minutes later have these findings discussed by the auditors, it would be basically hypocritical for us to be doing this. So I want to make sure that it was explained and that we are making a move that will not set up the district for any penalty assessments.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, did we call for the vote or we put the motion?
No, we didn't call for the vote, but the motion's on the floor.
Okay, so all in favor?
Wait, hold on a second. I just want to make sure we all understand what's happening here. So Noah, if I'm understanding you correctly, we're looking at the certificated personnel report. And your, your, what you put on the floor is to not approve of the temporary.
No, I, I put them, I put, I not, I didn't say not approve. I, I moved to approve it. I moved to approve it. I didn't move to not approve it.
Subject to discussion about.
Yes, just subject to clarification, which we received.
Okay, so in that vein, we can now vote?
Now you, well, I'm done with my discussion. You guys can do whatever you want.
Okay. Any further discussion about this item?
I, I have a question on this. This is to replace, as I recall, a previous person who left at the beginning of the year. So it's not like a new appointment as far as I can see. I don't know what the concern was. That's what I was asking.
The concern was based on the audit, the audit report, and because the audit report is a year in arrears, I wanted to make sure that, and, 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 and excess of administrators can lead to a penalty for the district. And I want to make sure by approving that, we didn't set ourselves up for another penalty.
Well, I think it would also, that doesn't affect the budget though, the interim budget was going to see because it was just one person for another.
That wasn't my concern.
Okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't a budgetary concern. It was the compliance with state law and the ratios.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, we are ready for reports. Remy, we will start with you with the student board member report.
Just waiting to share my screen. Okay, so to start off at Beverly, we have a winter spirit week this week and it's in celebration of the holiday season. And some of the themes for Monday was ugly sweater day, Tuesday ug day, Wednesday pajama day, Thursday reindeer day where people will wear brown, and then Friday snowman day.
Don't they dress like that all the time?
But I'd love to see you guys if you want to dress up in that holiday spirit as well. We also have a holiday lunchtime celebration on Thursday. This Thursday, December 12th, ASB will be holding our annual holiday lunchtime celebration. We invite students to come watch performances from Cheer and The Drumline and join us for reindeer games. ASB will also be passing out candy to all students in attendance. It's also just a great way to have students forget about the pressure of finals and soak in the holiday spirit and the season coming. Our freshman election is taking place where the freshmen will cast their vote and these students will represent the interests of the freshman class within ASB and will fundraise for the class of 2028's future prom. These are the current running candidates for freshman class president. We have Dylan Khalil, Bodie Sipster, and Arthur Weiser. For freshman class vice president, Isabella Faruz, and Eli Fahadi. For treasurer, Noah Rahmani, and representative, Sienna Goldman. For, just wanted to give you guys a preview of our senior merch. Everyone is able to preorder it right now and we should get them by starting next semester though. Be in Beverly and we'll start passing them out. This year, it's actually heavyweight and embroidered hoodie. So a lot of students are excited to see the different type of hoodie from what we usually sell. But it's going to be a great, great feature for all the seniors to remember. At Arodeo, we have some math and science pictures of the classroom of the students learning. Just students getting along together and learning activities in the class as well as Thanksgiving fun that passed last, a few weeks ago. And elementary night, elementary night at BHHS Soccer. And as well, the fourth, fourth graders went on a service learning field trip to Our Big Kitchen LA where they made food for the homeless. So this was a great experience for all those fourth graders and to help out the community. At Horseman on Tuesday, December 3rd, Horseman had a special guest author, Dan Sentott, come and do an assembly for the TK, Kinder, and first grade students. The students in TK and Kinder read the Crankenstein books, which Sentott illustrates. And Horseman also has a Crankenstein bulletin board in the main hallway for Halloween. So this was a very special treat for the students. And on the bottom, you can just see a blurb of who Dan Sentott is. As well at Horseman on Saturday, November 16th, they had their annual chili cook-off and bake-off. Parents and students were able to submit chili recipes and baked good recipes to be judged by a panel of student and staff judges. Prizes were awarded in multiple categories. After the cook-off, the community was invited to set up their blankets and lawn chairs to watch the movie Encanto outside on the big screen that was set up on the playground. It was a very fun and enjoyable event for all. And here are some pictures as well of the different staff, parents, and as you can see, Dr. Breggy making a highlight. On Tuesday, November 19th, PTA hosted bedtime stories in the library from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Students and their families were invited to visit the library to enjoy listening to guest readers. The roster of guest readers this month included several students that volunteered and Annette Goldstein, one of the Horseman's favorite TK teachers. Horseman also received the silver award for the successful implementation of their PBIS program for the 23 to 24 school year. On Wednesday, November 20th, they had a silver party to celebrate this achievement. All students and staff were encouraged to wear silver. As you can see in the photos, the students were wearing silver as well. And the silver party took place during all of lunch recesses. There was a donut truck for students to enjoy after eating lunch and a dance party on the playground during recess. Matthew Miller, one of the prime teachers, served as a DJ. And here is just another photo of those students dressed in either Horseman attire or the silver, enjoying those donuts. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Board members, any comments or thoughts for Remy? Okay, thank you. Rochelle, Ms. Marcus?
Hi, we're just welcoming Remy back. I mean, I missed him for a couple of weeks. He's been very busy either traveling or playing water polo and congratulate him. And it's nice to have you back on the dais, so hello again.
Thank you.
Love your reports.
Thank you.
And, and good luck with finals and I hope that the pajama day and those types of things that are going on next week will be of comfort for people with the stress of that.
Normanade is also having a de-stress day where they bring puppies to their school and students can play in the pen with the puppies. So that's another, I believe it's Thursday of this week.
Okay, very good. Dr. Breggy, superintendent report?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Stern. Good evening, everyone. As we transition over to my report from my computer, I do want to also add my thanks to Ms. Trhan and Ms. Starkins and Ms. Austin for all their work in this transformation during our move. This was a lot of work till late at night and it, it just was very intentional and to, to the greatest detail. And I really appreciate the work that you've done. I know. Let me, let me restart this because, oh, I'm on. Okay, Bev, do you, I'm, I'm on the link, but perhaps. Okay, now it's, okay, I wasn't doing that before. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. So as I normally do, starting out with just recognitions, we had National Special Education Day in the first week of December. And we've also, as you heard tonight, had our Thanksgiving break. And so we welcome everybody back for these two and a half weeks between our Thanksgiving break and our winter break. As I look at a spotlight on excellence in our school district, we were a school district that was selected for a consecutive year to present the national, the, the state level California School Board Association. This is the annual education conference in Anaheim. And so I had the pleasure of, of giving a presentation to, as you can see, a pretty packed house in Anaheim with school board members that are, are new to being school board members, to some veterans, as well as district office staff. And it was a really proud moment for us to be able to present and share some of the things that we're doing in our school district and put a spotlight on that for people that were in attendance. And I think that we had a resounding group of people, very engaged and felt like they had takeaway information that they could use immediately in their school districts. And that was just a pleasure to be able to do that for two years in a row. I'd like to welcome, we have two new board members that will be starting that have been elected in the last election, Ms. Sabag and Mr. Stewart. We have a, a very robust board university training that we do in addition to what the California School Board Association has expected of new trustees. And that will happen this week. So we welcome our two new board members as they have a meet and greet with the cabinet and we have an opportunity over two full days to go through the operations of the district in every department. We have a formal meeting coming up on the 17th of December at 5 o'clock in this room for a reorganization meeting. And this is where we are having a changeover in our board with our new board members coming. It is a, a sad evening as well as we say goodbye to Mr. Margot and we have an opportunity to do that publicly and thank him for his work as well as introducing to you our new two school board members and as well as the change in officers that we will have for our upcoming year. So it is an evening of tradition and also ceremony as we reorganize the Board of Education for the school district. I want to thank our cabinet team for undergoing such a rigorous process, a very comprehensive process and that most of the time, very tedious process of the policy changes. Most school districts have fallen way behind with their policies and we have really concentrated over the last couple of years of making sure that our policies are up to date. And we've battled a very archaic system in which to do that. And I also want to thank the board for spending many hundreds of hours reviewing these policies and having some good discussion with us as we look to see what the California School Board Association had recommended for our policies versus what's in education code versus what is unique and different about being in Beverly Hills and taking all of those and, and triangulating that information into what we consider to be our board policies. And it's been a very long and comprehensive process. And want to thank the board for really being engaged in the process because it's just been hundreds and hundreds of pages and hundreds and hundreds of hours. Sure.
I just would like to say, take a look at the book that's on the table there. That's just one of nine that we went through. So if you think that it didn't take time going through every policy, that's just an example of one book of nine.
And we thank Laura for a lot of work.
Yeah, that would be Mrs. Collins-Williams.
A lot of heavy lifting, literally and figuratively.
I had an opportunity, just a, a couple of events. I know that Remy had pointed out several student events, so I'm just going to talk about two of them. But the annual Science and Engineering Fair for our secondary students was well-attended and the quality of projects was just superb. Always a great opportunity to have intellectual conversations with our students. Want to thank Mr. Seaman for all his work that he devotes to putting this together, inspiring teachers and students to continually put proposals together and to share innovation that's happening in the areas of engineering and science. I hope that many of you had an opportunity to see the Diary of Anne Frank, which was put on by the students at Beverly Hills High School. Extraordinary talent, the set. I know that Thomas is here. I've never seen the commitment and vision to a working and dynamic set like I have from Thomas and his leadership and the students that he works with and the many parents that have donated their time to help and assist. This was an incredible production over a series of two weeks and I believe that there was nine performances. And I hope that you had a chance to see it. Many of us in the room are Rotarians and so Mrs. Manichari, Ms. Starkins, my. Many of us in the room are Rotarians. And so Ms. Manichari, Ms. Starkins, myself, we have had a great opportunity to work with our Rotary here in Beverly Hills to provide for this last Thanksgiving holiday, a full menu, a full grocery baskets of food, much inspired by many of the commercialized programs that are out there that will send you all of the food and all of the ingredients and you have to put it together. And we did that as a Beverly Hills Rotary. And we were able to provide 25 of our families that were struggling and in need to ensure that they had everything that they need to host a very nice Thanksgiving meal, everything from the turkey to the pumpkin pie. As far as community engagement, we joined the city with an invitation to be at the Rodeo Nights, the Holiday Lights program a few weeks ago. And that was a really nice opportunity to meet with the city and to turn on lights and to come together to start the holiday season here in Beverly Hills together. Would like to thank, if you look at the picture on the upper left-hand side, Coach Emilio Lari for the work that he does. This is a first West Side Classic soccer game. And even though it was freezing cold, it was very highly attended against Milliken. And we were really proud to be in attendance. And we really support new initiatives, new partnerships, new agreements, and this West Side Classic. It just checks the box in all of those. And that's a lot of work involved. And a special thank you to Mr. Ellis as well for being there, being part of the operational piece as well as helping to put together the entire program. That same evening, Ms. Collins-Williams Department put on a very nice program for parents for navigating the drug use and vaping that is happening among our youth. And certainly a widespread issue in our country. But as we narrow that down to what's happening here in our school district and trying to curtail that use and trying to reach people at home, as we've heard this evening, a lot of this type of behavior starts at home. And so we want to work and partner with our parents in ensuring that students are not looking to use nicotine, drug use, or vaping. And as they begin high school and they're exploring and some of the peer pressure. And it was a really great program that we had. Also, thank you to Dr. Wardrop, who is here this evening, who was a part of this presentation as well, as well as Ms. Samadi, who did some of the moderation during the actual presentation. It was a really great lineup of guest speakers on the panel. I think that's been a really effective way to conduct our presentations because the panel experts all have a different take and a different position on a lot of these matters. And they have different areas of responsibility within Laco and other organizations that that was just a really great synergy that you were able to put together, Mrs. Collins-Williams. And we're very thankful that you were able to do that. There was a lot of strong messages that were shared that night. It was also a very active engagement. It was expected that people that did attend, as you can see in one of the pictures, is to provide real-time information to help generate that presentation. There's been a lot of discussion about e-bikes. There's been a lot of discussion on our board about the concern about safety in e-bikes and students. There's been a lot of concern that's been happening at our PTA meetings at our schools. We have had our share of accidents with students to and from school on e-bikes. There is a lot to be learned about the different levels, how they're marketed. There are different permits, much like if you drive a motorcycle. And we are working very closely with the BHPD. We're looking to finalize a program that will hold students and families accountable for training if you are going to be riding an e-bike to school. And while that's finishing up and while we're still putting some details into this plan, the next step would be that this would come to the Board of Education for, to be placed in our policies for our students. The idea is to ensure that if students are going to be driving, riding to school using an e-bike, that in order for us to have it on campus and for you to be able to leave it there, that there will be expectations that you've had that training as part of the ownership and the ability to store that bike at school. And so it's been great conversations. There's a lot of education behind learning about the capabilities of these bikes. And again, not to use the same theme, a lot of this starts at home and we know that. And we've heard at PTA meetings that students are purchasing bikes and parents aren't even sure that the level of power that a lot of these bikes have. And so it is a concern in our neighborhood. And we want to make sure that we do everything we can to provide the education that's needed for our students so that they are safe coming to and from school and certainly when they're at home on the weekends. Want to thank our Board of Education for joining me on a Sunday morning on December 1st, which is the Vahan Setian, had the charitable foundation in the memory of Vahan, who was a student at Beverly Hills High School, for a tree planting ceremony. And it was great that the community still comes together to be there in support and to support that voice of the Setian family. And really want to thank everybody for being there. So as you can see, we're in a new location here as one of the last phases of our reconfiguration plan from 2018. That planning was to, when we had an open school, to have that school open so that the district offices could move there. And while we'll be more public soon about the current state of where the district offices is and then that next step about working with a developer, we're very close to being able to share the next steps of our district office. But in the meantime, it is a facility that will be completely torn down. It is a site that is in very bad need of restoration and moderation. And it would be millions of dollars to do that. We did look at hiring, the board had allowed us to hire an architect to come in to this space at Hawthorne and to look at what it would take to create district offices here within the space that we have available and in classrooms. And it was estimated, it was just over $4 million for that to be done, for classrooms to be changed over into offices at a very, very large expense. We know that that was not the most responsible thing to do. And we want to thank the board for doing their due diligence as well as it was very clear to our board that that is not the best use of funds is to spend that kind of money and reshaping and having construction projects that are happening here. So instead, we have made this our home. And while moving into classroom space isn't always ideal, it works. And as you can see just from this room alone, that small things make a difference and you can make it work. And so about half of us from the district office has already moved in. And to this date, it's been at a cost of about $154,000. And we're more than halfway moved in. So it's a quite economical way, but we're making it work. And I know that there are administrators sitting out there that have spent their own money on furniture and they've spent their own money on some of the things, the furnishings. And I am very appreciative of you doing that to make this look like a new home for us. It is a very central location and we're excited to continue having departments move over one by one. This is just an example, just to show you transparently that the money that, in order to keep up the district office from air conditioning to just different vendor quotes when it comes to fire life safety requirements is at about just under $4 million. To, if we were to put money into the district office to keep that up, keep that running. And many of you know that have been in there and have worked in there that not much has changed over the last several decades in the district office. But we would also agree that we need to be careful about where we spend that money. And so while we've not allocated money to keep up that building, we also know that it's not the best use of funds to move over to a new space like this and have a construction project, an additional one, that's going to cost about $4 million. So we are doing this on, we're way under budget and I think it's appropriate. And I think that we're doing a really miraculous job of making the classroom spaces work for us and our offices. And I look forward to seeing that work its way out. Many of you have been in the district office, so just, this is being very transparent about some of the things that need to be replaced if we were to stay there. And that certainly is not ideal for anyone. The annex building with the air conditioning and lack of, and an elevator that is not reliable. And we also had students there. We will have some students here as well. So we want to make sure that we are meeting all of the fire life safety as well as, you know, the other upgrades that our students deserve to have, which is air conditioning and appropriate lighting. And so we're very proud of this last transition that we've made. And we look forward to giving you the final update right after winter break. We'll show you our facilities. We're very proud to share this site with our, the Beverly Hills preschool. And future, it's going to be an early childhood center, as we've talked about for quite some time, as a partnership with the city on how to continue those programs so that we can attract families to BHUSD at a very early age and then keep them here. Our cabinet just had just a recent tour of the construction at the high school for Buildings B3, B4, which is all of our performance art space. And so it was, again, transformational to be able to see the work that has been done, that is really finishing up. And this is the exciting part about construction is when you're able to enter in on that final phase that will be completed by this summer. And I know that the board is eager as well to get in there. And so we are going to set up something with Mr. Karat very soon for our Board of Education to be able to see the work that's been done because it is just at that point where it's significantly finished and you can finally see where we're going and the vision for the improvements and enhancements that have been made for our performance arts. And that is my report for this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Student Board Member Remy, any comments?
I just wanted to say that Dr. Bregge, you had so many different activities to attend to, but I love how you were able to go to all of them and share them with us. And the transition here looks very nice. I can't believe that this used to be the library and it looks so amazing and such a cost-efficient way. And I'm looking forward to seeing the new B3, B4 buildings coming very soon. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bregge. That's the final report that I have to sit through from here on out. It just will be of my choosing. And I was thinking of the fact that the boardroom being in a library is kind of reflective of what existed here beforehand, you know, obviously books, but the concepts of knowledge and creativity. And I hope that that kind of gets infused with the new board as they continue to govern from this room.
Thank you. I don't have any further comments about the report, but it was great, as usual. Ms. Marcus?
Well, I want to thank you for moving the district office. I'm now two blocks from the district office. It's walking distance. I'll get a little exercise, I hope. I want to thank you for that very comprehensive report. I attended some of these events. It's getting very difficult to be at more than one place at the same time when there's two things going on. And I unfortunately did have to miss a couple of events. I know I missed last Thursday night's Beverly Vista instrumental music program. I missed the Chili Cookoff and one other event because it's just impossible to be in two places at one time. And all I can say is with what's coming up this week and next week, I hope you're paying attention because there's a world of visual and performing arts things coming up. I believe Thursday night and all of next week, vocal, instrumental. And I think if you can get to them, look in the emails and get out to them. The kids are wonderful and they deserve to have an audience. So I'd like to see a large attendance at those events. And again, I have to tell you, I'm amazed at what became of my school. It was once my elementary school, my children's school, my school where I taught for many years. And it's amazing how quickly it can be transformed into such a beautiful place. So I, and you did a great job, Procount, for the price of it. I wish we could do everything like that a little more in our homes.
Ms. Manichari?
Thank you. Not too much to say other than it does look fantastic. And we thank our teams for all of their hard work into turning this into the new district home office. It looks really good. My only comment is perhaps we could move that table aside or bring back the podium only because looking on the screen, I think it would be nice for the folks at home to be able to see who is joining us and speaking in the same way we are. Or perhaps we need to add another camera into the mix.
Great. So that's it. Just feedback for next time.
But otherwise, it looks truly beautiful. And something tells me as we live in it, it's going to be better and better. So thank you, everyone, for your hard work and making it happen.
All right. With that, the presentation and acceptance of 2023-24 District Financial Audit by Christie White. Dr. Jason Hasty is presenting this.
I will be introducing Heather Rubio, our principal auditor, and also Jesus Cardenas, director from Christie White as well. They'll be joining us via Zoom. Overall, I just want to say, I really appreciate the relationship with Christie White. I know they've had a longstanding relationship. Also, I think on the consent calendar or agenda, we saw that there was an extension of the contract and we want to contain that relationship as much as we can. Without further ado, I want to see if they can join in.
Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jesus Cardenas, like Jason mentioned. It's, I believe it's only going to be me in the presentation. I don't think Heather is going to be able to join us, unfortunately. But I'll be going over the auto-report presentation. I put together a PowerPoint presentation to go over the report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. I put together a PowerPoint presentation to go over the report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. And am I able to share my screen?
Make sure you're set up. Hold on one second. Jose, can you share now?
Let me try. Okay, did that work? Are you able to see the PowerPoint that I have on my computer?
Yes, now we can. Thank you.
Okay, let me swap the presentation to presenter view. Okay, how does that look on your end? Does it look good?
Yep, we're good. Thank you.
All right, perfect. So you might remember me from last year. I presented the financial audit presentation for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. And the fiscal year that we're covering for this year is from July 1st, 2023, through June 30, 2024. And I'll be going over the opinions that we issued in the audit report, our objectives when it comes to the audit report, and some of the audit procedures when it comes to the audit. So the main objective in the audit report is to issue opinions in three main areas, which are the financial statements, federal compliance, and state compliance. And I'll be diving in a little bit deeper on each area as the presentation moves forward, and exactly what we do in relation to each area and some of our objectives when it comes to the audit. And there are various opinions that you can issue in the audit report. The unmodified opinion is the best one. It basically means that a clean audit was conducted, that there were no significant issues disclosed in the audit report, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies were identified. And the reason it's called unmodified is because that's the standard opinion that's issued in the audit report. And if you have issues that are significant, such as material weakness or significant deficiencies, you might have to change the opinion on the audit report. So that's basically when you modify the opinion and you issue either adverse opinion or a qualified opinion or a disclaimer. So when you don't change the opinion, it's basically an unmodified opinion. So that's why the term is called unmodified. And like I mentioned, this is the best opinion that you can get. And an overview of the audit results is presented on page 89. So overall, there was a clean audit that was conducted in the financial statements and federal compliance and state compliance. We did have to issue a small minor finding in relation to state compliance that I'll be going over towards the end of the presentation. So the first two paragraphs of page one discloses the opinion on the financial statements in the independent auditor's report. And in the second paragraph, you can see the opinion that we issued. And in our opinion, the financial statements refer to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Beverly Hills Unified School District as of June 30, 2024, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And then our report on internal control is outlined in the report that begins on page 80. So we're not required to give a opinion on internal control. We're only required to give a opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements as of the balance sheet date, which is June 30, 2024. We're not required to give an opinion on the financial position of the district. So we're only required to give an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements. However, we do have to assess internal control, and we use internal control in our risk assessment when it comes to designing the nature, extent, and timing of our auditing procedures over the financial statement balance accounts. So this is going to be your balance sheet accounts and your income statement accounts. So your balance sheet accounts consist of your cash accounts, your AP accounts, accounts payable, accounts receivable balances, capital assets, long-term liabilities. And your income statement accounts consist of any revenue sources, expenditure sources. And after performing auditing procedures over the balance sheet accounts and income statement accounts, we didn't identify any significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, or non-compliance that were material to the financial statements. So in summary, we're basically just verifying that the balances that were reported in the district's financial Saks accounts were free from materials misstatement, whether that's a overstatement or misstatement. And the next area that we have to issue an opinion on is on federal compliance. So like I mentioned, there's three main areas: the financial statements, federal compliance, and state compliance. And in the first two paragraphs of page 82, you can see the opinion that we disclose on federal compliance. In the second paragraph, in our opinion, Beverly Hills Unified School District complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal programs for the year ended June 30, 2024. So the district expensed more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal dollars. Then they're going to be subject to a single audit or federal compliance audit, as they call it. And then we, as auditors, have to perform risk assessment procedures to determine which programs are going to be subject to that federal compliance audit and are determined to be major programs, since we don't have to audit every single program that's a federal program. We only have to audit programs that are determined to be major programs. And the two programs that we selected for testing this year that we determined to be major were the IDEA Special Education Program and the ESR Program, which has been audited in the previous years since they were record-breaking money for the entire state when it comes to the amount of federal dollars that were received and expended. So that one has been consistently identified as a major program just because of the high dollar amounts that have been expended in the previous years. And our main objective is when it comes to federal compliance is verifying that the expenditures that are expensed with federal dollars are allowable for the program. And so, for example, when it comes to employees that are charged to federal dollars, we want to make sure that there is proper time and effort reporting, such as time certifications in place for those employees. And when it comes to non-payroll expenses, making sure that those expenditures related to those programs are for that program and that there's a proper approval process in place when it comes to those expenditures. And after performing procedures over our federal compliance audit and over those two programs, we didn't identify any significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, and we didn't have any findings to disclose for the fiscal year 23, 24. The last area that we have to issue an opinion on is on state compliance. And in the first two paragraphs of page 85, you can see the opinion that we issued on state compliance. And our opinion, Beverly Hills Unified School District complied in all material respects with the laws and regulations of the applicable laws and regulations of the state programs for the year ended June 30, 2024. So the state compliance procedures that we have to do and all the programs that we have to audit comes directly from the state audit guide. And it's a lot of different programs that we have to audit related to state compliance, such as attendance, instructional time, instructional materials, SARC. So those are various areas that we have to look at. We have to verify that the district is in compliance with all the applicable ad codes. So the two big programs that were new for fiscal year 23, 24 were Prop 28 and the ELP program. So we had to verify that the district's in compliance with all those new ed compliance code that were issued for those programs. And usually when there's a new program that's added for the fiscal year, that's also added onto the audit guide, there's usually higher risk for non-compliance since it's the first year that that program's on there. And usually if there's a riskier area, that's just because of it being included for the first year, it makes it a higher risk. And if there's a higher risk, then it's more likelihood for there to be non-compliance and potentially a finding that's issued in the audit report. So we didn't issue, we didn't find any issues in those areas related to Prop 28, ELP, or any other areas in that state audit guide. The only finding that we did have to disclose in the audit report is finding 2024-001, which is noted in the bottom, Classroom Teacher Salaries, which is a repeat finding of last year. And I'll be covering that area in more detail in the next page or slide. So this is a summary of finding number 2024-001, Classroom Teacher Salaries. And this is outlined on page 92. And there's different criteria that we have to report in the audit finding. So we have to report the criteria condition, cause effect, question cost, et cetera. And in summary, the district, per California Education Code Section 41372, a unified school districts have spent a minimum of 55% of the district's current expenses of education towards salaries of classroom teacher salaries. And after performing procedures over this area, we determined that the district did not meet that threshold. And we determined the cost to be, the deficiency amount was due to one-time funding received from COVID-19 relief funds, which has been an issue for lots of school districts throughout the state of California. And usually when it comes to this finding, the county, some, the county, it depends on the county. Sometimes they give you an exemption before the audit finding is disclosed in the audit report. And then there's no audit finding that's actually included in the audit report. But LA County doesn't give that waiver or exemption until the audit finding is included in the audit report. So for all our LA County clients that have this period of finding, they don't obtain that exemption until the audit report discloses that finding. And then there's no question cost, but the county still wants us to report that finding on there. So nothing significant, but we do have to report the finding in the audit report. And that pretty much recaps the presentation. So overall, it's a very clean audit. Other than that one minor finding, everything was pretty well in regards to the financial statements, federal compliance testing, and state compliance testing. Any questions?
Ms. Marcus has a question?
Thank you. On page 21, it's just a correction. It's about, let me go back to it. Something about the district, the school being a K-12. And I believe that we are a TK-12, and that is not mentioned in that page. And although it says this is required by the state, well, we are partially required by the state, though we are almost, I think, at full TK enrollment in terms of that. That was the other, so that was on page 21. I don't know if that requires just a slight correction. On page 23, I have a question on the funds that we put money into. There's, you mentioned the Capital Facilities Fund, the Deferred Maintenance Fund, the Cafeteria Fund, and the Student Activity Fund, et cetera. But we do have started to do a technology fund, and I don't see that one listed there. And I think it should have been, I don't know if it was during that time, but we don't have a technology fund where we put money aside in our policy. So I'm wondering about that. And I just want to thank you for this report. I am glad that we have come through with, I think, flying colors. And I'm looking forward to a positive from the state if they go through this. So I thank you.
Ms. Manishari, any comments, questions?
No, no comments. And thank you to Dr. Hasty, Dr. Breggy, Mary Lou, and everybody for making this happen. And also to the Christie White team for working with us. It's great to hear.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the 2023-24 financial audit.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to the approval of the first interim report, 2024-2025.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Breggy, Superintendent Dr. Breggy, we're pleased to report tonight on the first interim. And we'll get into all the details, and Mari Lou is going to open up. But again, I want to also go back to the audit. Just, that was a very good audit. And it just speaks a lot to our team and the Fiscal Services team and all the great work they're doing and us as an organization. So really, that's something to really be proud of. But for now, I will definitely turn it over to Mari Lou, Ms. DeArcoz.
So as you may recall, we adopted this budget back in June for this fiscal year. And so at this point, we are in December, the first interim report. The next time, so this first interim report includes expenses that are actuals from July to October 31st. From there, we then project what we believe the expenses will be for the remainder of the fiscal year. We come back again in March to go over our second interim budget report, which will then include the expenses from July to January 31st. And then again, in June, we will be discussing and adopting the following year. And we will know our actuals of this fiscal year sometime in August, September of 2025. As a reminder, our district is community-funded. All districts in California are funded with the local control funding formula. As you can see in comparison, our district is mostly funded by property taxes. And that is why we look at our property taxes really closely in terms of looking at the revenue that our district will be receiving. This means a community-funded district, the changes in ADA do not greatly affect our unrestricted revenues. However, ADA increases would result in lower per pupil revenues. Why are we here? So like I mentioned, there are two reporting periods that are required during the fiscal year, the first being the first interim now. That's due to the county office by December 15th. And the second interim due by March 15th. This report certifies the financial condition of the district for the current fiscal year and also projecting the two subsequent fiscal years.
The big thing here is very clear, that second circle I just put on there. You know, so based on the first interim report, we're bringing to you a positive certification. That is the key to this. Okay.
So projecting our property tax revenue for the last couple of years, you can see the trend. It's been increasing, and we are projecting, based on P1 numbers, to have a 72.9 million revenue in property taxes.
Yeah, let's get to the summary and make sure we see the comparison of revenues. The first thing to pay attention on this slide, we're looking at the property tax revenue. What does that dollar equate to? Based on P1, we're looking at that a positive 1.198 million. And then as we go down, we had an increase in lottery, and then we had some COLA increase with some of our other funds. And then as we get, look at the negative there, again, nothing to stress out there because it's our pending donations. We don't realize donations until we actually receive them. So that's something, you know, we'll be most likely getting, but we're not sure yet. And our total revenue, though, is up 930 as of, from budget adoption to first interim. And then as we go to our expenditures, you'll see here, we did have an increase of about 992,000 in salaries from budget adoption. This is mainly because we had an increase in teaching FTEs. If you remember, we brought back some TK teachers. We had some other elementary teachers as well that equated to, and again, might not be the exact eight teachers. It could be up to eight FTEs equate to. So just keep that in mind. It's, we did that, and we made that decision. And as we go down to see a good thing, where we had a decrease in expenditures of about 195,000, PERS actually came in a little less. It was a decrease, something we haven't seen happen in a while. But that was from what we budgeted to what we got for a interim. We saw a decrease in expenditures. And as we go down to services, we did have a slight increase in sped contracts. And as we go down to services, um, we did have a slight increase in sped contracts, increase in utilities. Um, also the summer school that happened uh this past summer. Again, it happened in the new year, um, you know, and again, that wasn't fully budgeted. So we did have some increases, but altogether, when you talk about contract costs um in general, like those five thousands, if you look at it, it's about six hundred and sixty-seven in increased funding. And we did have an increase in expenditures, but that was really uh using kit funding, which is we something we needed to spend. We bought some kitchen upgrades, you know, ovens, uh, you know, different kitchen equipment. And of course, we had to do that facilities master plan. So that was an increase in costs as well. Um, the one thing, um, right here, you see interfund transfer. That is a going to be a transfer out for our deferred maintenance costs. Why did it go up a million dollars? Well, I was being very conservative. I was being very conservative, um, and that's really for the cost of what this potentially this district office move could be, based on the conversations we initially had, um, and all the possible costs that would come down. I wanted to make sure we just, we we put in the budget just in case. I don't think we're going to hit this number at all, as Dr. Breggy just presented. Um, but that's what that is, that transfer out. And at the end of the day, if we transferred out to our deferred maintenance, we have lots of projects we're going to have to follow up on anyway. Um, and I, yes, um, Ms. Marcus, I think you had a question. Yes.
I'm sorry. I was just going to ask about that. That was something that I have a a note here on the uh transfer of one million dollars for the uh changeover to Hawthorne. When I saw the amount of money that we actually, and I thought to myself, we're going to put about nine hundred thousand dollars back, that are nine eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars back.
Remember, this is a transfer out. We can go to fund, sorry, it's going, we can go to uh fund thirteen. This would be, or sorry, fund fourteen, sorry, fund fourteen. And that would be our deferred maintenance fund um that we'd be putting that into. And again, that would be to absorb the cost of the district office move. But again, we have other items that we, yeah.
Okay, I just caught my eye.
Yep. Um, overall, you'll see the increase of expenses of about two million. Uh, going on to uh the really the big one here, I would, I would, before I put that arrow out there, but look at the uh general fund ending balance. Uh, but it says less restricted balance. It's that middle line that starts at eighteen million eighty-three thousand. As you look at the NYPD, which is a multi-year projection, something we have to do for first interim, we're going from eighteen and then we get like twenty-five, twenty-six, we're going to nineteen point nine, and then we're going to twenty-three in the third year. That's that ending fund balance. Um, the one thing you will definitely notice is really important as you go into total unrestricted um ending fund balance. We're going from twenty-seven to twenty-five, um, and you see that twenty-seven, but then you see the reserve there. We're at twenty-six percent and then we're going to thirty and then we're at thirty-three percent. So uh, again, we have some one-time costs this year that we're planning on. But um, as always, first interim is very, very conservative. We always do this and um we probably saw that last year where not everything, you know, we we plan to spend, we spend. Um, and that's how we want to keep it as much as possible. At a lot of actuals, we had somebody fall on the bottom line, but we want to be there again. We always want to fall on the positive if possible. Um, looking at other funds, you want to talk about those?
So these are projections based on our actuals through October thirty-first. Um, we are projecting that our ending fund balance for the rest of the funds uh will be like this um as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So for Fund thirteen Food Services Child Nutrition Fund, um, one point three million. Deferred Maintenance Fund, uh, about three hundred thousand. Special Reserve Fund, uh, fifteen million. The Facilities Building Fund, uh, twenty-six million. Developer Developer Fees Fund, twenty-five, um, two million. School Facilities, uh, Fund thirty-five, sixteen million. Self Insurance Fund, sixty-seven, eight hundred sixty-three thousand. And our OPB Fund, seventy-one, nine point two million.
So just a quick question, um, you had mentioned Fund fourteen before. If the district move goes as Dr. Breggy had somewhat predicted, um, that number will be a lot higher, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I want to point out and I, you know, th- these are projections. So be clear, these are projections. This is where we're hoping, you know, we're we're calculating, we're going to end at the end of the year. Um, ne- next steps. So again, uh, we're going, you guys will approve this, uh, you know, positive cer- certification. Um, and then, of course, the next step would be our second interim. And that'll really tell us where we are at uh month six of the year. So what where we are as of January thirty-first. And we do the same thing. We uh look out, we uh for the where we're going to end it this year, and then we're also projecting the next uh two years as well. Um, the things we will be doing uh pretty close is that property tax is our 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 number one source of revenue. And then, of course, we have some um other funds, those one times that are um expiring.
One last question, I believe. Um, I know the board is leaning in the direction of establishing a technology fund separate from deferred maintenance as the bond funds for technology um run out or or used. Um, that's not reflected in this this budget or?
Yes, it would be Fund seventeen point one. We have sub-funds within there that we're saving money for technology.
Then it's under that seventeen. Thank you.
I have a question.
No, we do, we do have it.
Would, Noah, were you done?
Yes.
Actually, I had a quick question. Can you go back to the the reserve, the chart that had the reserve at the bottom? So tell me again, what is the required minimum percentage for a reserve fund?
Three, yeah, three percent.
Three percent, okay.
We're we're well above. We're as a community funded district, I will, you know, the the public, everybody should know this. Um, we definitely need a larger reserve than your average district. We get money, um, our revenues at different times than other districts. And therefore, uh, throughout the year, we do have to do transfers in from the other funds, that Fund seventeen, to pay our our salaries and benefits.
So it's good to have just a a reserve that's almost ten times the minimum.
And it it prevents us from having to borrow the money with interest, which is what we used to have to do before we created the fund.
Absolutely. And and so um the better, you know, for us as a community funded district, the higher we can get this reserve strategically. And we're really, it's going to be better for us in the long run. We should always um focus on that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Manishari? Yeah, go ahead.
The the CTE plans to reduce in the future years are outlined in uh how you plan, no, I know, how are you planning to reduce the to the restricted funds to the career and technology education and uh SS, which is schools? They, no, not plan to reach for the, I have CTE and SS here for plans to reduce in future use outlined in meetings to share how you plan to do this.
Yeah, so for CTE, we do have some grants that are coming to an end, and that's something Dr. Seaman and I are going to be working on this year. We have to really solve that. Um, and hopefully, yeah.
And the other one was summer school.
Yeah, summer school too. Summer schools, we definitely, we're going, we've already started meeting about that because um looking at the total costs and making sure that the cost is going more through ELOP, our restricted funding for summer school. We will have an ESY cost as always out of, um, again, I'm going to start talking resources, but six special ed. Um, ESY would be that cost. Um, but uh for CTE, definitely, we have some grants that are going to be coming to an end, which we definitely either need to reapply or reconfigure the programming as needed. But that is something we are going to be working on and it will be put into our uh second M report. If not, um, really, um, estimated actuals and budget adoption.
Okay, so I understand in in one place you have nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars on certificated salaries. And then in another, on the chart, the one that the actual that you work off of, it showed four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, and how did we go so far? From four sixty to nine ninety.
Which slide are we talking about?
Um, well, in the the budget that we were presented with the ninety pages or one hundred and there's a spot in there that says that we were off of the six, I don't remember what page it was on, but we were off by four hundred and sixty thousand dollars uh in budget at in in at this time. And then it shows in the report that you just gave us the nine hundred and ninety. So there's a difference of almost half as twice the amount. I wondered if you could, well, I'll give you, maybe you can look that up and see. But I remember going through this and thought to myself, hmm, that sounds rather strange. And then I see this and it says nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So I just, I'm trying to find the page that I found it on. It's on uh probably on services operating costs or something like that, or something where it talk about certificated employees. Here we go. Here it is.
You know what page?
Certificated teacher salaries, well, though, you hear it shows nine hundred. Can't tell what that says.
You know what?
Five hundred and two there. Uh, no, yeah, certificated set teacher salaries, but I saw somewhere else was a, well, that's closer to what you reported in the other one. So I I I guess this was just something that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions, feel free to email me.
Yeah, I know, I know. I just, I go through it and I, that caught my eye, so.
Got it.
Now, thank you.
No problem.
Uh, thank you to the entire Business Services Team for making this happen for us, and it looks great. Um, I just want to share some thoughts. I I want to remind us that we are very reliant on the JPA dollars. Um, that's a big boost that we get. And so for me, I I always try to think as if those dollars did not exist. I think that's a better approach to have in general. So that's one concern that I just have ongoing, reminding myself we need to live within our property tax dollars, you know, if possible. Um, as Mr. Margot shared, I do have a concern that the bond funds um are going to be done within the next several years. Uh, and so I don't think we realize how reliant we are on that as a as a little bit of a um pick-me-up or a, you know, a feed-in, especially for the technology and so on. I understand that tech is incorporated.
In Fund seventeen.
In Fund seventeen, but I'm not clear on how much. I remember a three hundred thousand dollar figure that we started to put away. Sorry, we're doing a five hundred thousand every fiscal year. Thank you. And so I'm just curious to know, and I I'm sure that you've worked it out. Um, I'm curious to know on what basis are we believing that that is the correct figure? And so I accept that it is. I just would like to understand why. Is it because we spend X X five hundred thousand each year? So then by funding it ourselves worth three years out, you know, what's the?
I can speak from experience. And again, I haven't done a hard calculation. This is just experience. Typically, we look at total students. If we're going one to one, what's the cost of per device? And then we do a calculation. And then we would have a cycle um per grade or how we, you know, how we're doing the cycle. Five hundred thousand based on thirty-one hundred students is really reasonable.
Reasonable.
Yeah, and and especially if we're on a um a refresh cycle by grade level with different, say, three to four grades at a time, very reasonable, um, five hundred thousand.
Okay, and then to the extent, because I learned um in the tech update that we also have a lot of tech-related staff and support staff. Um, so do those dollars come out of the tech fund and the bond fund or are they?
So they they come out of general fund. But remember seventeen, yeah, they come out of general fund.
Yeah, so it just is what it is. Okay, thank you so much. Um, summer school, as Mrs. Marcus um mentioned, is something that we've been talking about growing the program. Uh, I know that there is a cost to it and hopefully we'll be discussing this in the not-too-distant future. It's not that I'm I'm uh of the belief that summer school should be at zero cost to the families. It's just that it's something that I think we need to have a discussion about. And and I'll put it another way. In my opinion, summer school should be available to every student. If if we can make that happen this summer, great. If not, I think that's something that we need to um aim towards. That's my personal belief.
Understood.
Um, I know that in this last summer, we were focused on certain groups to try to get them ahead. I'm with you on that. Um, but to me, when the goal is excellence, that's a goal for everybody. Um, and so I think that it would be helpful um during the regular school year if everybody had that opportunity in the summer as well. So I mean, does anybody, is that something that we're all interested in in making available to our students?
Absolutely agree with you.
Okay, thank you. So I mean, I know it's not something that can happen necessarily overnight, and I know that it's a big lift for our teachers who are already working hard in this, in the regular school year to also be with us in the summer school program. So I leave the um the details up to you. As Dr. Seaman spoils me and he says, your problem to identify, our problem to solve. So I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you. Um, then uh I have not seen the facilities master plan, and I've been hoping to see it. So if you can share that with the whole board, that would be great. Um, and then we can come back and if we have questions, we can talk about it.
Yeah, I think uh the survey went out about a week ago. Oh, we got it here.
Yes, come on in.
Uh, yes, we will be actu- actually issuing a survey to the community, but we did receive the first draft of the facilities master plan today, which we will be reviewing over the next week or two and then uh presenting it to the board as a draft.
Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I recall some months ago, we approved of an architectural plan or a master plan. Do you remember what I'm talking about, Michael? Where the gentleman was sitting in the audience that night that we approved of him and he was an architect?
Yeah.
I thought that was it.
That was it.
That's it.
Yes, it's Canon Design and they're assisting us with the master plan.
Okay, thank you. So are you are you saying that in conjunction with the facilities master plan, you want to issue a survey? Am I understanding correctly?
Uh, we're issuing the community survey just to get additional input uh based on this draft that we received to see if we want to make any changes.
Okay, do you mind sharing the survey with us before it goes out? Just so we have a meeting of the minds of um what we're trying to accomplish with it?
Sure, if we can do that.
We can certainly do that. I didn't know it it even came in today, so.
No, the draft with the survey, we have ready. We were going to distribute to the whole community, but
Okay.
we most certainly can share it if that's what we'd like to do.
Thank you. I mean, is anybody else interested? I'm interested to see it.
I just hope it doesn't cause a delay in trying to get it. That would be the only thing that I would think about. If there's um, if there's a times time delay on this, or is there time sensitivity to it? I would not want that to impede the study or the survey.
Is the master plan a trigger for you for something in particular?
Not in particular at the moment.
Good to have?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, it wouldn't really delay us as long as we can maybe share it as part of a board connection, maybe, and then uh get your input.
Sure.
If that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Whatever, whatever works and whatever is efficient, I certainly have no intention of um delaying your process. Thank you. Um, okay, then I just wanted to confirm, we have been keeping our our eye on the state modernization funds. And um I know that applications have been submitted and I know that we've been in line. I just want to make sure that um there's nothing else in the future for us to do other than wait. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much. That was it. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, I make a motion to.
Ms. Marcus, I have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We had discussed in the past potentially doing a line line item for the um payments on a COP.
Yes.
And is that going to come? I I that I think that'll have to be worked out with facilities about when the bond money runs out. So is that going to wind up in this budget or do you think it'll be next year's budget?
Um, we would most, depends. Depends what happens with Prop two with all our applications. Um, we also, I mean, yeah, that that's the big one outlier. I don't want to jump the gun and say we're going to commit all this money to a outside, you know, another fund if we don't need to. But, you know, so for me to get a real amount, I I wouldn't want to know those other things. So hopefully we'll know by second interim, but I could see possibly budget adoption. If we're going to do a transfer out at that time, if we can, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, that's why, that's why, once again, it's important to have the reserve where we have it just in case, in case that comes into play earlier than than later.
COP would be about seven hundred thousand a year, something like that, if we were, and that's what we would be looking at trying.
Yeah, and that, of course, like you said, will depend on Prop two where everything sits. Okay, thank you, thank you all.
And that's also assuming we're on the lower end in the, like, a ten million short for a couple of years before it comes in. So it could be a a little higher, it could be, you know, so we'll be hearing about that in the spring.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, uh, for the deferred maintenance, is the, for yeah, for for Fund fourteen, is the projected balance solely for the transition to Hawthorne or what other maintenance?
No, uh, good question. Um, so so what that transfer out, that one million? Yes, we did that just, you know, because based on our conversations, we were in the mid nine hundreds, what we were thinking. But right now, we're coming well under that. Um, but remember, we have deferred maintenance we we use for other things as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, Ms. Marcus, do you want to make that motion?
Okay, I make a motion to approve the amend, uh, to approve the first um interim report, twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five.
And I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. That brings us to our annual developer fee report.
Get the next one, hold on. Great, okay. Um, yeah, it just, as the letter says, every year, uh, we have to do an annual reporters requirement from government code six-six-zero-zero-six and six-six uh zero-zero-one. Uh, the school districts provide a certain financial information to the public each year. Uh, this must be available uh for review a hundred and eighty days before the close. So typically, most districts across the state right now are doing this report. Um, and again, what are developer fees for? Uh, they're intended for reconstruction, reconstruction, modernization of school facilities uh to accommodate students and educational programs. Um, the other thing, I, I just really look at safety as a big one, if we're upgrading safety, we can use it for that. Um, and again, based on experience and what I've actually used developer fees for, if we have new programming or new students or more students, you know, that would be something we use developer fees um as well. Um, and then of course, uh, the, the other piece would be the modernization as needed. Um, but here is a, the report, as I scroll through it, um, right now, our current rate residential is four dollars and seventy-nine cents per square feet. So when, uh, if I'm gonna put more square footage on my house um in the, in this city, in Beverly Hills, then I would have to pay that for each of those square foot, that'd be what I would have to do to get my permit per se, and I would do that with the city. Um, if I were commercially, you know, having a commercial, that, that goes down. Um, the idea and the theory or the correlation is that if we're getting more spaces in our house, we're gonna have more people and going, going, coming to the districts. Um, so for this year, and oh, by the way, I just want to give a heads up, we do um, right now, I think about every two years, these get uh reallocated, the state um board comes out in January, and it's not gonna be this year, I think it's gonna be next year, but we will be bringing to board a contract uh to do a developer fee study to get these um rates probably possibly increased. And that would be something, um, which would mean more revenue for developer fees for the district that we can use for these purposes. Um, so, uh, see, you'll see there, beginning balance as of July one was two point eight million. And then we got, the ending balance is about two point five. Um, we collected for uh twenty-three, twenty-four, remember this is twenty-three, twenty-four, six hundred eighty thousand. And then we earned about ninety-nine thousand in interest. And then fair market value, that is a s- snapshot we take at the end of every year, you've probably heard about it a little, but our, our value in the county treasury went up, so we had about forty-two thousand um increase there as well. For uh, what we spent our developer fees on, you'll see we, last year, twenty uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a total of about one point one million spent in developer fees, these were the projects. You see the middle school, the wellness center was about eight hundred sixty-four thousand. Uh, the modernization that happened in middle school um as well, we had about a hundred sixty-nine thousand for that. And then the high school, uh, we had uh modernized about three classrooms, you'll see the rooms there, two sixty-one, two sixty-two, two ninety-two for sixty thousand, and of course, uh, the playground and shade structures for about twenty-four thousand. Um, and then we do have an administrative cost, um, because Beverly Hills, uh, city, the city of Beverly Hills does um give us this money and there's administrative costs, um, which is uh thirteen thousand eight hundred ninety-four last year. Any questions? And this is just a report, there's no action that needs to be taken.
Um, Mike, does anyone have any questions? I just wanted to ask you about the report that you're seeking.
Mm-hmm.
Do you just do that generally speaking, you think it's good practice?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, um, again, what we would do, uh, we'll contract um wi- with a company that specializes in that, in that um area. Uh, it takes a few, uh, about, about a few weeks and then when the new rates come out in January, what, I'll bring that to the board, I'll bring the contract to the board, I'll bring the new rates to the board. Um, and then at that point, I have to notify all the relevant agencies, um, that the rates have gone out, I'll be writing them, I'll be writing different groups and we have to give them proper notice and then we have to change, um, make sure the city knows and, yeah.
Uh, do we think that it might be a good idea to let the city know in advance or there's nothing to let them know for now?
The, part of the process is letting them know in advance. I will be reaching out, once I get the study done and see the rates, I officially have to let them know in advance. And I'll give them a date and I want to say it's like sixty days before I can actually do anything or we can say that we're gonna start doing this. The city is the main collector of these fees, so they will have to be notified.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. We move on to approval of the amendment to extend the exclusive listing agreement with CBRE Inc.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the amendment to extend the exclusive listing agreement with CBRE Inc.
I will second that.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a mo- oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, move on.
I'll make a move uh to uh reject claim number six-four-seven-one-seven-three.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to reject claim number six-four-seven-one-seven-four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to reject claim number six-four-seven-six-eight-four.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to reject claim number six-four-eight-zero-four-zero.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the approval of amendment number one for early trade work guaranteed a maximum price. Number two, for Swinerton Builders for the high school, Building C.
I'll second. All in favor?
You have a question?
Oh.
Does anybody have a question?
I don't have a question, but I would be interested to know if um maybe Mr. Solari wants to join us and just give us a little, I shouldn't call it little, a brief update um on what these all pertain to just in case anybody is um watching and wants to know a little bit more. I mean, I know we're, you know, intimately familiar with the status, uh, but it would be great to um, to check in. Is everyone okay with that?
Sure, a little update on where we are with the, starting in the very early stages of our
What is the amendment for? What is the amendment for?
And it could, it could speak to items um A through F in general as they um all relate to the high school. Hi there.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening and Mr. Superintendent and board members. Uh, basically, this is gonna, as we were moving forward with the construction of the new Conheim building, uh, first we had like a site-ready GMP, which was a little amount. This is the second portion of the GMPs. And the reason that we are doing this incrementally, because we wanted to start and have a jumper start in the field. And it, it basically also is make it more competitive when they bid it out. So this portion also is about, if I remember correctly, it's like another like sixty percent of the cost of construction for the project. So the third one is gonna be a smaller amount. Um, so that includes the main, uh, basically most of main trains for building is included in this uh earth fork, uh, structural concrete, structure is still masonry. Um, so bit, for building the shell of the building and the, what is left is mainly the finished works. That's gonna be our GMP number three that uh our goal is to bring it in front of the board uh within the next two months. And the rest of all the contracts that you, is in front of you, is basically support services that we need for completion of Upper Athletic Fields project and Building C project. It's for DSA inspection, testing lab, and all those good stuff. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Does anyone else have any questions? I'm just curious, I'm always trying to anticipate um the next phase. So here we are, Building C is underway. Um, we have the front lawn coming online in the summer. We have the upper athletic field, tennis court and pathway down coming online in the summer as well as B-three and B-four performing arts wing. Um, looking towards the south side of our town, um, when do you see movement happening in that direction? And I know that um the current Conheim cannot come down until the new Conheim is up. And so we're talking um end of twenty-twenty-six at that point, which is really fast, um, actually. So what do you envision for the south side pieces and how is?
Technically, we cannot do anything till we complete the new Conheim. So we have to finish this project, demo the old one. That basically is gonna open up the room, because uh if you want to touch anything, we have to touch your current athletic fields.
The whole thing.
And we don't want to just basically eliminate your football field and so the key to all of this is completion of Building C or new Conheim. And as soon as we complete, like, not as soon as we complete, that when we are closer to complete, we have to go to, to our, like, procurement process again, select the contractor for that project and start that project. But uh, I don't foresee that's gonna happen in like, as you said, till like close to the end of twenty-twenty-six.
So, so that legwork will commence in early twenty-twenty-six?
Late twenty-twenty-six.
Late twenty-twenty-six.
Yes.
Okay, and then that's something that will probably take a year?
Um, I don't remember the duration, but yes, that project I believe is gonna be around a year or so.
For the fields?
For the fields.
I think it was around eighteen months originally, projected, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And just to clarify again on that project, as we previously talked about it, our plan is to just make the procurement in a way that we can have all the components priced. So we are gonna bring an à la carte menu in front of you. So that also is gonna help with the deficit of the budget.
Yes.
Which one of these we want, because there are some supporting facilities in that project.
Right.
That is not necessarily needs to be done at the same time. There are some storage facilities, some restroom buildings. So we are gonna price all those components separately. So you can decide, okay, if for example, don't build these three, it's gonna help our deficit or maybe we don't have any deficit, let's build them and wait for these. So that would, in that case, we don't need to stop for the entire project. So we can have the fields and have those supporting facilities to be built later.
But then how do those numbers work? Because is it that we have the, the dollars that we are expecting to get from the state modernization? So are you suggesting that even with the, the dollars coming in from state modernization, it would not necessarily cover everything?
If we get all those dollar in time, it would cover the money that you need right now. It's all a matter of timing that when a state is gonna start allocating those monies to the districts.
Okay, so, and then, for example, the items that you mentioned à la carte, and I remember the storage and the restrooms and you showed it, you laid it all out for us. If, if we get all the state modernization funds, those à la carte items would also be covered?
Yes.
Okay, and um, how will we have an indication? How do we plan for this, not knowing how fast the state moves and what dollars they actually would award us or any other?
I think within the six to eight months, we, we will know about that. So the, basically, the proposition just passed. So the state is gonna start planning and they are, they are, I, I, we know that they have put together a committee for the allocation. So obviously, they are gonna move a little bit slower, but within the, I, I'm hoping that within the next six to eight months, we know how this money is gonna be allocated and how soon we are gonna get, start trickling money.
So by this time next year, we'll have a very good indication.
Yes.
The only reason I ask is because um as Dr. Haste prepares the next interim budget and going forward, if we're putting aside construction funds, that would be interesting to consider in addition to the COP dollars.
I would hope we would know where those dollars are. But, you know, at that point, we, you know, we'll have to.
We'll keep our eye on it.
Yeah, I mean, for us, for us really, um, there's no project that's gonna be unfinished this year or even, I, I don't want to say next year, based on the current funding. It's, it's those last few projects, so we will definitely know and be able to put it into a budget adoption if, if needed, what's needed. But that would be that June.
Okay, and.
The only thing that is gonna be impacted, if any, by your, by uh deficit, is the south side project. We have enough money to finish all the projects that we have in our hand and Building C.
And the south side includes the two park, surface lots as well as the athletic fields?
Yes, but uh, because that's also a different A-number. Uh, when we are able to demo Conheim, we may be able to just basically build those parking lots earlier because it's being submitted to DSA as a separate A-number project.
Great. Um, but would you say generally speaking, that the south side project would be much less costly than, for example, the new Building C?
Yes, it's basically, there's no building, it's a lot of field work and all those buildings are smaller. We have it in our budget, I don't clearly remember how much is there, but in the, and our goal is to just have in a study session to update the budget, like, within the first three months of the following year. So we'll come back in front of you with like a full explanation of like where we are on the timeline of each one of the projects, where are we on the overall budget and, uh, so you are gonna hear about all of that in the first three months of the next year.
Thank you, and then one last question. I remember a couple of months ago, we extend, we extended out the Fonder Solari Management Contract. Do you?
Um, there was some additional services for miscellaneous non-bond projects, yes.
So for, at this point in time, until when, uh, what's the termination date for your contract?
Unless you terminate us, I don't think there is a termination date.
I'm just curious to know, how is, how is it working?
Um, we have budgeted for it, in all those general budgets that we have for the projects, our services is already budgeted as the estimated budget for the project.
Okay.
So, uh, I don't anticipate we as a company run out of the money till finishing all of your projects.
Okay.
And like, actually, we had conversation this morning. We are also trying to find saving anywhere possible, even in our fees, just to help the program. Like, for, for instance, right now, I don't have a project manager assigned for Building C because I don't see the need. The project is slower, our current staff can handle it. So as soon as it picks up after approval, so although in our budget, we can charge ours, for example, against this project, we don't, I don't see the necessity. So we are gonna bring forward the staff as soon as we need them and basically the contractor is uh working on the full force.
Got it, and what I, what I was actually trying to get to or confirm is that you'll, what do we need to do to ensure that you're gonna be with us until the last brick is laid?
Uh, yes, as, as long as you don't kick me out of the door, I'm still gonna be here.
Okay.
So, I, again, in the budget-wise, we are fine.
Okay.
Uh, because all of our budgets for the project, the estimated budgets, is the overall budget, soft cost and hard cost.
Yeah.
So those estimates that we brought, bring in front of you, for instance, like these inspection services that you are approving, it already has allocated money in the project budget. So it's not an additional cost to what you have seen, for example, as the general cost for Building C project.
Specific approval.
Yes, so uh, we are, you're just approving a contract based on a already allocated estimated budget in overall program budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for eleven A. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I'm gonna do some bundling, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve items B and C, the Sandy Pringle uh DSA inspection services for the upper athletic fields and for the Building C project.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion.
And now I'm gonna bundle D and F, uh, the approval with Twining Consultant to do the testing and inspection services for Building C and the upper fields project.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now I will take a step back to E, a motion for the agreement of BLX Group for the arbitrage rebate compliance services.
Okay, I'll second.
Um, quick summary, I, I read the transmittal, but I was a little unclear on this one. It's, I believe it's the first time I've seen an arbitrage, so I'm just wondering.
Every, every five years.
That's probably why.
Yeah, we have to do an arbitrage study, um, we're a little behind, um, but, uh, so what that means is tip- typically, it wouldn't even be much of an issue, but as I mentioned before, that fair market value, um, our money in the bank, most li- it went up this last year, we all know that fair market value had an impact. So not only do we have to do it, but this year was definitely something we wanna, we, we need to get done. And um, what would happen is if it is determined through the study, um, that we do owe, like, we did make money of the money we have in the bond, we have to pay that difference back to the U, to the IRS or the US government. And that's the rebate, so the nomenclature is a little odd on this, and I thought it was odd too. But we are not getting a rebate, we're rebating, yes, but in the dollars, you see there are um services for um the, the study they're doing.
And this is required with a bond?
It's required.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, uh, we have a motion on the floor for E, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll make a motion for the approval of Twining Consultant Inc.
No, one G, one G.
Oh, sorry. Um, I'll make an motion for the approval of change order number one for TLS Choice LLC for shade structures over existing playground at Horseman Elementary School.
I'll second the motion.
I just have one comment on this one. Um, I wanted to thank you guys for making this happen, all the pieces to the puzzle for Horseman, um, for the little ones. And I just wanted to ask if you could please, at your convenience, update the board on any improvements you're gonna be making to the El Rodeo TK um and Kinder area.
Um, well, I can briefly speak on that, but we did talk about what we'd like to do as far as uh improving the path of travel from the playground area to the other exit and also. also incorporating some of the space that's used for the community garden, making it more playable. We're looking at that now, I'm working with Ken's team and Dr. Hasty to figure out what we can do out of the general fund and out of our maintenance funds, basically, to improve that area.
I'm, I'm even thinking, like, totally non-DSA items, like, for example, hopscotch, the four square, which even with some tape, you know, we can make it happen, it's not the ideal, but you know what I mean? And even, for example, in the TK Kinder yard, there's the circle that can be delineated for the bike path and so on and so forth.
Yes.
I'm seeing the need is, is there, and I'm just reminding us that we have, it's big, we have three TK and five Kinder classes, and the play that I was seeing when we were at Horse, at Hawthorne is not the play that I'm seeing here.
Yeah, we would agree with you, we have been out there, we've walked that site, we've watched kids play on that site, and we know that there is, there's, there are plenty of options to look at to provide equitable experiences.
Yeah, and I know that you guys have been handling a lot of things, to say the least, so I'm not commenting in another way, I'm just simply reminding us that this could be a good thing for us to look into.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, most of it that we can do is, outside of DSA, the only thing that may trigger DSA is if we are creating a path of travel.
Yeah.
It may not create, trigger DSA, but most likely.
And the path of travel is not something that's come to my attention, for me, it's been more about the play.
Yeah.
I'll leave that to you, if, if, you know, you and site team think it's important. Oh, yes, and of course, we've been watching the soccer netting and the poles going up, and that's a very interesting process.
Yes, so.
Thank you.
We've probably seen, the poles are up now, they're going to be pouring concrete tomorrow and Thursday, and then after that, once it cures, we'll be able to put the netting up, which will be by the end of next week.
Great.
By the way, are, are the poles going to extend all the way up to the basketball courts, or how far along are they going to go on Wilshire?
They go up Wilshire about halfway up the basketball courts.
Just wherever the soccer field is.
And a little beyond, yeah, about 30 feet beyond.
It was amazing, I was, couldn't believe it.
Yep.
Okay, we had a motion on the floor for G, I believe, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're on to.
Do we have something for H? Do we need a motion for this, or is that?
Need a motion.
I'll make a motion for the sew-up education construction insurance program coverage for the Beverly Hills High School, Building B3 and B4.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion carries.
Okay, I'm very excited to make my very last motion. I am going to move the waive the first reading and approve the second reading of the Board Policy 5000 Series.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now Noah knows. Communication from board members.
Nothing at this moment, thank you.
I will have a lot to say next week, and, and time is late, so I just wanted to thank Kbev as always, and I wanted to thank Dr. Brege and Rebecca Starkins for their work on the presentation to CSBA, I really appreciate it, I know it was a team effort, but you guys pulled a lot on that, and I wanted to recognize your efforts in that. And I really, I really want to tell the speakers who spoke tonight that are not here, hopefully listening, that, again, I, I listened intently, I heard you a lot tonight. I, I'd like to think that in this situation, as a couple of the speakers kind of alluded to, that there are no villains in this situation, there's just opportunities, and I think we need to look at those opportunities as improvements to kind of get the district back to where a lot of people who spoke were saying that they went to school at, and we can be a little self-reflective and make this course correction and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margot, and I will say as well that it's very impactful to hear a variety of people from our community and outside of our community make comments about things, and we do listen, we listen with sincerity when there are children involved and there are learners involved. I think that there is a lot of pain in our community, I think there's been a lot of unhappiness and confusion since the election, I think that people all around are searching, and I think that one of, one of the biggest things that I want for all of our learners and all of our community members is, is contentment and peace and feeling productive. And clearly, there is work that needs to be done to sew those chasms and to make us whole again, and I'm very curious to find out how exactly we do that with this complex picture, and I'm very grateful for everyone who came forward and, and shared their thoughts with us.
Well, I also want to acknowledge all of the speakers who did a very fine job of bringing their issue and their perspective to what they feel is a very big problem, and in that they would, and we will certainly listen and take some, take note of what we can do to heal the wounds that are out there, and they are out there, so we need to make sure that we're going to do that. I just want to thank Kbev again, but I really want to thank all the people who made this transition to the Hawthorne School from the district office, an amazing feat, and I think they did a fantastic job from, from entering the building to the greedy, the way it's set up and so on, I, I think you've done an outstanding job, and I personally want to thank everybody that had a hand in doing that, I don't want to mention one name, because if I mention one name, I will probably leave somebody out and hurt somebody's feelings. Again, I would like to invite everybody next week to the last meeting for our dear friend, Noah Margot, who will be bidding us fondue, à fondue, after 13 years on the board, and I'm sure he's not going to go far, I'm sure we're still going to hear from him about many things, so please join us next week on the 17th of December.
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned, good night to everyone.